All right, we're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by our amazing team and two very special guests. I want to give you guys a few moments to come on, say hello. Where are you coming in from? We're always excited to see where you are in the world. There's a very, very exciting announcement that we want to make sure that you guys are here for and can learn a little bit about. Here at the open of our call, we are then going to get into app notifications. So the new app that you have that's available for you to use in your account has the ability to push out notifications to your people. We are going to get into some detail about that. Our founder Greg Kilwin has some slides prepared and he's going to walk you through this amazing thing that he built for you guys to use. But first, we are going to open up with a very special announcement from two really good friends of ours. They are leaders in Young Living and they know a lot about creating engagement and building a business, a big business. So you guys be very excited about what we're going to be learning about here in just a few minutes. Let's see where you guys are coming in from. We see a lot of excitement about this. I love it. So we are, we're really, really happy to have here today Chrissy and Claire from Grow Workspace, you guys. So I'm going to come back over here to the party view because I wanted a big reveal, but here we go, Brady Bunch. What's up? We have our team here today, founder Greg Kilwin, we have Julie and Colin and Jessica, and we've got bonus. Hi, there's Grace. She's waving. Grace is waving. Everybody wave at Grace. Hi, Grace. So cute. So anyway, we're always excited to see you here. We've got Panama. We've got Tallahassee, Florida, Salt Lake City, Kansas, Illinois, B.C., Canada, Germany in the house. What's up, you guys? Excited to have everyone here today. So I want to give the floor over to our friends from Grow Workspace. There is a special opportunity that you have to learn from them in a more intimate setting and in a context that you might not have experienced yet. If you don't know Grow Workspace and you use Get Oil, oh my gosh, please go learn about Grow Workspace because this is an amazing resource to save you time in your business, to have the content done for you when it's time to send out your education. You don't have to go and get into Canva and make a bajillion graphics and know what to say and research the products. They've done that for you and they plug in beautifully with Get Oil. Now, what they're going to be sharing with you today goes beyond that and there's a special opportunity. It's time sensitive. It's coming up next week that you're going to want to listen into. So let me give the floor over to Chrissy and Claire so we can learn more about this.
Hey, hey, I see a Central Georgian on the chat. So go Georgia. I'm in Georgia, Joy. Awesome. And everyone from all over the world, welcome, welcome. So excited to chat with you just briefly because I can't wait to hear more about the app stuff. So I don't want to take too much time here. Clearly, you guys are one step ahead of everyone else in 2022 or in 2022, right? Because you've invested in your business with Get Oil, right? That's why you're here. You know that a website is important to build your brand, to grow your business online, but are you implementing the correct strategies to be able to do that? Are you converting your leads to customers on autopilot? Leveraging the automations that you can? Are you setting your new customers up for success right from the start? Right? Those are big questions. Or maybe you just signed up with Get Oil or you're thinking about it and you feel a little bit lost with this whole website building thing. Kudos to you for attending Get Oil's office hours. I know that you're here because you want to learn. Well, we've had a lot of people reach out to us through Grow Workspace and just tell Claire and I both, you know, oh, well, I've been paying for a website service for months or maybe even a year and I really haven't done much with it. And Ashley mentioned some of the resources that we have that can be used without a website. We started without anyone using a website. And then when Get Oil really came along and blossomed, we were like, yes, we must create content for websites because they're so powerful. It's how we built our massive businesses online. Oftentimes, we understand that people are overwhelmed. They don't know the lingo. They don't have marketing knowledge. And so they dive into this online website space really excited and then get a little bit overwhelmed, kind of retract and go hide in the corner. And you're like, oh, what did I get myself into? So I put together a masterclass, Claire and I both did. I'll be hosting it. It's called How to Build a Wildly Profitable Website Without Knowing a Thing About Tech. And I'm teaching it on Monday night at 9:00 P.M. and wanted to invite all of you here to attend with us. We did this actually last September. It was a huge hit and people were so bummed that they missed it. We sent out a replay and even some people didn't catch that. And so we are bringing it back so that you can have the opportunity to, to attend and learn more from us. So whether you've just signed up with Get Oil or you're thinking about it or you've had a website for a while, I recommend attending. You might learn something new. I'll be covering my secrets to how to get your website up in a flash. You don't need to be a tech genius to do this, okay? I'll share my strategy to generating leads and converting them to customers on autopilot. We've generated over 35,000 leads and convert new customers daily. So we know how to do this. And I'm also going to teach you the new strategy to getting your group off of social, how to get your new customers started on the right path from day one so that they really do turn into lifelong customers and brand partners. So that's what we're going to be covering. I'm not going to share anymore because we're going to talk about it on Monday night, 9:00 P.M. I think Greg or Ashley, someone's going to put the link in the chat, but you can go to getoil.com/growwebinar and it's just G R O and then webinar. So only one W there and perfect. I see it in the chat. So I'm really excited to see you guys there and do this masterclass again because it was so amazing the first time.
If any of you who are here today attended that masterclass, you know what's up. Let everybody know in the chat how much it impacted you, what you got out of it, because this is a really, really great opportunity. Guys, Chrissy and Claire aren't just, you know, folks who create things to sell to the Young Living community. They are also Young Living brand partners. So the information that you're getting, that they're going to be sharing with you is from that unique perspective. So we always want to make sure that we're only bringing you the things that are hyper relevant to your business. And that is exactly what this is. So I hope that everyone who is interested in taking their business to the next level in 2022 will go and check out this live masterclass on Monday. That's getoil.com/growwebinar, G R O webinar, all one word. Thank you, guys. And we're so excited to hear more about this. Awesome. All right. So let's go back to our gallery here. And by the way, you guys, if you're here today and you know, you're nice, there's a thing on Monday. Oh, we're talking about the apps. If you're here today because you're like super stuck with something that you're working on, please make sure that you ask any questions that you have in the Q and A so that we can be helping you live here on the call. And by the way, for Donna and Jesse, I do have you guys down for a live work review here today. If you could just raise your hand for me real quick to confirm that you're here. We're going to make sure that we've got that time carved out and we can work together at the close of our call. Hey, I see you. Okay, perfect. All right. So what I'd love to do now is kick it over to Greg, to our founder. We're going to be talking about push notifications or app notifications. Maybe just a quick show of hands, you guys, let me lower our hands. How many of you have used or downloaded the Get Oil, Get Oil's new app? It's called Attract Well, but how many of you have the app? Ooh, look at all those hands. That's like, that's almost most of the call. That's really awesome. So I'm really, really excited for you guys' feedback. You know, let us know how that's going for you. I want to say in particular, if you are someone who wants to build a group to serve your customers, if you want to take them off of Facebook or if you build a course or a coaching program or something like that where you have your own hub of information inside of Vault and Get Oil, this is especially, especially important information for you. So stay tuned. I think for the sake of our replay and everything, let's go ahead and turn off our videos so Greg can get into sharing his screen and getting into these awesome slides. So let's all tune in and be sure, again, if you have questions, please make sure they go into the Q and A so we don't miss them. All right.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ashley. Let's share out my screen here. Everyone seeing the screen, all right? Got a little slide deck to go through here first, and then I will hop into a quick demo to show you how to do these things inside the system. First of all, in case you're not familiar with them, app notifications are-
I'm not sure if it's just me, but I'm not getting any audio from you.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, let me switch.
Oh, you can. Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay, or I think, oh, it's the wrong mic. It's not using the right microphone. Okay, how's that? Is that any better?
I heard you just fine and actually it sounded a little bit better on the other one.
Did it? Okay. All right. Well, let me switch back over to the other one then here. All right, I'll speak up to it. Maybe it'll help. Cool. Okay, so app notifications, they are, I think, a great way to keep you and your people up to date. Just a quick refresher here in case you missed our app rollout presentation that we did a couple of weeks ago. Get Oil now has an app. It's called Attract Well, the name of our system platform. We named it that because there's a lot of people who prefer not to kind of spill the beans on their business being on the oily side of things. So this is a nice way to keep that under wraps until you're ready to reveal that to them. So but the app, the app works for both of you to access your Get Oil back office and it works for your contacts in your member area. So everybody can use it essentially. You, you know, if you have a Good Oil account, awesome, you can access your back office. If you don't, but you belong to a member area of somebody or in your case, like if your clients belong to you, your member area, then they can use the app as well. And I'm sure everyone, you know, everyone who's touched the smartphone has seen the app notifications, the little pull down panel and the little pop ups that show up right on your phone. But the app does enable that. So I'm going to go through that here a little bit today. So just quick background, you know, what are app notifications? Sometimes they're called push notifications. It's a little more of a technical term. So I'm going to call them app notifications here and that's how they're referenced throughout Get Oil as well. Their notifications that are basically messages sent directly to you or your contacts' phone or tablet, depending on what's going on in the system. And they, they let you know about new leads, replies to incoming text messages, if you have two-way texting, any purchases that are made through your site, whether it's pages or vaults and then member area notification. So that's what you as a Good Oil customer would see if you install the app and you enable the notifications. So you should get that as well. You'll still continue to receive your email or text notifications that you did before. There's ways of shutting that off if you'd like, but this is an additional notification system and a lot of people prefer that because it kind of stands out over all the rest of them. All the rest of the emails you might have in your inbox. As far as your contacts are concerned, you can let them, what they can be used to let, well, automatically they will let people know about new posts in a discussion room, new comments on posts they've made, new comments on posts they've recently commented on. And I think this is really cool. You from your back office can send app notifications to your contacts whenever you'd like with whatever content that you want. Now, your contacts do need to have the app installed and accept notifications. So it's essentially like, you know, a two-way opt-in kind of thing. But once they do that, then you can send them notifications kind of however you want to and I'll go through what you can include in those. But there is, I'm sure, all sorts of things you can do in terms of incentives to get people to install the app. So I'm going to go through how app notifications look. And since it was kind of hard to get one off of a phone, I found a website that happened to have some on there. So I'll show you pictures of that. It'll look a little bit different, I guess, coming from, from Get Oil or the Attract Well app, but it'll also similar. So app notifications, they can include four things potentially. So there's two things that are required. The notification body, right now, the phone providers limit that to about 150 characters. There's also a link URL which is also required. So where essentially will they go? What will they see when they tap on that notification? Of course, they can always swipe it away and it goes away as well. You can optionally include a title, which is like a bold headline. And then you can also optionally include a picture. Now, the picture doesn't always show for every device and every operating system. It's a little bit different. Depending on how things are, there's also, Get Oil also includes in the notifications, it will also include your site fab icon, you know, the little icon that appears in the upper left corner here, like the little drop, or in this case, this is Google Slides, their little icon. It'll include that in the notifications too, in case they don't have the big, you know, in case they're not looking at the big picture. But so the notifications do depend on the device and what they support. And of course, it's going to change over time as providers change things, you know, operating systems upgrade. But this is one example. So this is from Android. There's some extra lines on here because it was part of a bigger diagram. But I did find this one. So like right here where it says this one signal, it will, it'll show Attract Well and it'll have the time on there. This bold area is the headline and they included a little emoji in there. This is that site fab icon I was showing you about right here. This is the message and then here is the picture. Now, on my Android device, I don't see the picture by default. I have to like expand it. So I only see this top piece right here. But I don't know, there might be different variations of Android where, where it's different and it does show the picture. But it is cool that you can include the picture in there. You could, if you wanted to, you could say, you know, like, expand this to see the picture, whatever, you know, just to kind of nudge people to open it up if there's something really cool that you want them to see with the photo. On iOS, it looks very similar. iOS 14 and higher, I don't think, if, I don't think pictures were supported on previous versions. I was testing on an older iPad and the picture did not come through, but once I upgraded to the new iOS, it didn't allow me to do that. So again, very similar here. The main difference, I think, is that the picture appears at the top. This again will say Attract Well up here. And then here's your headline and your, and your content that you have down below. Yeah, I just covered that, you know, app names. I was going to show Attract Well, title, message, image, and then that site fab icon. So there's some other, other notes here about the app notifications that are important to know. They, when you're sending them, they use one-tenth of a credit each. So they're way more reasonable than emails or texts especially and they're, you know, they, they could be as effective as texting if people have the app installed. So and as we all know, the texting uses a lot of credits compared to comparatively to this. So be a good incentive to get people on push notifications. People can tap the notification to be shown the URL that they go to and it opens up the Attract Well app and it'll show that URL inside of there. And if you send a bulk app notification, then you can see how many taps there were overall and see who tapped. So in this case, this is under, it's under, I think the message is like in the contacts menu and I can probably find where this would be, but for, or show you that a little bit, but it'll show you the percentage of clicks, total clicks and unique clicks. And this number over here is clickable. You can click on that. It'll take you to the contact manager and then show you who actually opened your notification. Right now, clicks are really the only thing that can be tracked, unfortunately. Although that actually the key, this number here is useful too. I believe that this will reflect the number of people that have push notifications or app notifications enabled on their phone and, you know, have a device registered. So you'll at least be able to see how many were sent to and how many clicks there were, which is really cool. Some other notes here to the saved replies editor. Now it supports an extra field for push notifications. So you can have like a saved reply for push notifications. I think it just added a URL field. If you have more than one device within the app, your device will be registered, only registered for, or sorry, if you have more than one account within the app, like a different, you know, two different Get Oil accounts or Get Oil account or two member area accounts, whatever, from other people. Your device will only be registered for notifications and accounts that you've visited at least once. So from that list on the app screen, when you first log in, that shows you all the accounts. You do have to click on that, a tap on it once and then it will activate the push notifications. Otherwise, it won't for the accounts that you don't visit as a way for you to like limit your notifications that you might be getting. So I think I saw a question here from Paula about this. Once they swipe the notification away, they won't be able to get it back if it's like a on-demand push notification that you send through the contact manager. The member area, it'll be a notification of something that they can get to by clicking notifications. But it's kind of like Snapchat, I guess, here is the, is the analogy at the moment. So like if somebody swipes it away, they, they won't be able to get it back unless it's that member area notification because they can go in there and get that back as well by clicking notifications of member area. So also app notifications can be used with automations. This is really cool because you can trigger activities based on that, like a one tip, a one tap subscribe to a campaign which tags them or, you know, RSVPing to events or whatever. So you can connect up the whole automations with the push notification, which becomes really, really powerful at that point. And you can, you know, create an exclusive subscriber list or exclusive content, something like that for your people, just as a, you know, an incentive. And you can increase, you could either like, look at this as a way to save credits or maybe even increase exposure with app notifications. Because they, you know, only cost one-tenth of the credit. Essentially, they're an alternative, they could be an alternative to or backup to you bills and texts. So we can send out your email and then maybe send out a push notification, alerting them about the email if you wanted to, for example. Uh, let's see. So yeah, there's some, there's some ideas like, you know, if you offer special content via notifications, just the people who have installed the app, you know, that can increase the number of people who are engaged with the app and maybe ultimately save your credits, get on the VIP list, whatever, however you want to position that. And, you know, because you can send it really a completely custom push notification with your content and destination link. Really, there's so much that you can do with this. I mean, you know, you can send them directly to, I don't know, a Grow Workspace sway or to your member area or anything really, you know, monthly, monthly promos. I mean, there's just so much that can be done here with the flexibility there. So managing devices, some quick notes on that. People change devices all the time, get a new phone. It's pretty simple. If you're in your back office, just click your name in the upper right-hand corner of the back office. There are little section there that shows your devices for your contacts. They just go into your member area and click on the account link and then you can either delete or disable notifications through there. So like deleting a device that you don't have or shutting off notifications entirely for a device. Because you can actually, as a, for example, if I were to log into a single person's member area with both a with two devices, with both a phone as well as an iPad, both devices would be registered for push notifications. So I could go into the My Account area and turn one of them off if I didn't want to get it. Say, for example, on an iPad, or you can get it on both. So people can register multiple devices, which is kind of cool as well. Yeah, so I'll pop into the demo and Q and A here. You know, again, email support@getoil.com. If you have any questions, we'd be certainly happy to help out. Let me run through a couple of questions over here. So Alison says, so if I'm understanding correctly, I can stop the email notifications via email and just get notifications via the app? Yeah, you can. There's a way under, it's under, I mean, over here to contact settings and general settings. For example, if you want to turn off new lead notifications by email, you could do that here, you know, just uncheck email. Mobile app shows up there too. If you have a device that's registered to your account, otherwise this, this checkbox doesn't show up if your device isn't registered through the app. But yeah, for new leads, perfect. And another question there, automations with app notifications go against our 10 automations and basic, yeah, any automation that you create would go would accrue towards that limit in the plan. And Sheila asks, how do we know if someone has installed the app? Uh, that's a, a good question here. I think add this on here. So yeah, you can go under, let me go that again here just to slow down a little bit. So if you click on my contacts and then filters, go under more filters, there's an opted into app notifications link. You can hit that and then it'll just show you the people that are, are opted into app notifications in that specific account in your account. So then you can kind of get an idea of that. Now, you know, they could, the system is set to auto unsubscribe them. So like if they opt out, it will, I believe, remove them from your distribution list as well. So that'll, that'll shrink automatically. But of course, if their device is retired and they never turn it off, it will still show up. So anyway, there's some old details about that. Um, one other Q and A here before I hop into these. Alison asks, can we bulk add our contacts to opt into the app? You could. I mean, I think what you'd want to do in that case, and I've seen this from a number of people, they've created like a custom page inside their site that shows all about the app. And then they can just, you know, they'll have links to download the app and then they'll send out, for example, an email or a text saying here, here's the app. So that's, that's one idea that I've seen sort of like pushing people there. Yeah, the app is free to anyone. You can invite your contacts to download the app. If you need the link to the, so there's a couple of different places where this is sprinkled in. The, there's a default campaign that's sent out when somebody's added to a vault. We did add buttons in there. Let me see if I can find that. There is a campaign that automatically, you know, is included with their system called this built-in Welcome to Vault campaign. And what this does, it does include, we did add some extra buttons down here about getting the app. So anytime they invite somebody to a vault now and you have, are just using this default campaign, it'll automatically invite them at that same time. But you can certainly go ahead and email that to people or text them or whatever. If you want to find out the links to the app, what you can do is just search for apps with that little green question mark icon. Click this and then there are links right here that you can use. This is the direct link to, for example, the Apple App Store as well as the Google Play Store. These would be the apps that you can, or the links that you can send in. However it is that you want to send it. And I mean, not everyone uses email texts. You could put it in our Facebook group or Telegram or whatever that you would like as well. Um, yeah, so, okay, so I'm going to demo sending out this push notification quick. We'll see if there's more Q and A that come in here in a little bit. Let's let me go to the dashboard. This will probably the easiest place to get access to it. But you can see now, you've probably seen this for the past couple of weeks. This button has changed from, or now it includes app notification. So if you click on that, it'll walk you through the process. I'm just going to send one message here. Just say, everybody, you don't have to choose any tags, but now there's this button for writing an app notification. And this is kind of what I was showing on this slide. So here's a title and it does kind of walk you through this. This is optional. This is required and this is the URL to open and you can add an image. You can also schedule it. I didn't mention that, but you can schedule something to go out at a later time if you want to, as well as save the draft and so on. But yes, it's just, just as simple as filling this out. Your saved replies do work on this. I, you know, I don't know if, I don't think any, yeah, so this just fills up the title there. But depending on the saved reply, it could fill out title, body and URL as well as a picture, depending on how you get your saved reply set up. So yeah, it's, it's pretty simple, like, hello there. This is my notification and then, you know, whatever URL you want. Send it to Google or whatever, select a picture, you know, drop that in there with that and yeah, just, you know, send that out. Hit send and it'll send it out. And in this case, it does say 78 contacts, but I don't think all 78. I think it was only two. It'll narrow it down and then pull the appropriate amount of credits out of there. So, so sending it's pretty simple. It's very much like a text. It's just there's or, or a email. It's just there's an extra field or two that you can use there. You can also do this through the contact manager. Like if you go into my contacts, that's the other way of doing this as well. So maybe select all these contacts that I've got selected here. But you can select the ones you want to. And as I showed you earlier, you could filter it if you wanted to, just those people that are opted into app notifications. If you want to have an idea of who has that and then you can, you could either email or just message them or select them individually. Under the actions menu, then there's an app notification link here too, and it'll open up that same little window where you can include the message. Now, I will, I want to mention this here too. This, if you want to include the automation for the URL open, that's right here. This account doesn't have one, looks like. But if you click on this and if you have an automation, you'll click there and it'll put it in this area in the URL automatically. And then if people tap it, it'll run it and add them or send them a campaign or whatever else that, that it is you want them to do there. Uh, yeah, so I think this, this account does have the devices registered. So I'll show you under here. If you click on your name and scroll down, you can manage your devices for app notifications. And here's where you can like turn off, like, oh, I don't want this Verizon iPhone should be shut off. I'll just shut that off and get saved changes. So where you can delete the device if you completely gotten rid of it. So very similar for the member area as well. They just click my account in the corner and then they can go ahead and manage the devices. It looks very similar to this. Yeah, so let me touch on the saved replies here quick as well. So if I go under contact settings and go into saved replies, you'll see, I'm gonna just create a new one here to show you that. So this has been changed. This is text or app notification message. This is the message body. The subject is what would appear in the headline of the push notification. You can add the pictures. Only the first one is used because push notifications only support one, only the first picture would work with it. But then you can put in your app notification URL as well as your automation, if you would want that here as well. So that's how you would modify that. It's really pretty straightforward, you know, in, in terms of sending that out. The other ones, pretty much all the other ones are sent automatically, all the member area notifications. Those are sent, you know, as people comment and post and whatever, those are sent out automatically. So I think that there are a couple more questions here. Let me know if there's anything else that anyone wants to see here. See, answered that one. Yeah, invited to everyone. Alison S. is the only purpose for someone to get the app, be it they want to use a vault for someone other than you. Yeah, but you can also get the app to navigate your back office and get away from here as well. So that's the other reason that you can get it. But if somebody, yeah, I think they would have to belong to a vault in your member area in order to be able to use the app. And this is actually, I'll mention this too. So this is something new since we rolled this out a couple of weeks ago. I think I posted in the Facebook group about it, but as of now, all you have to do is invite somebody to a vault. They don't even have to like set up their password. So for example, if I wanted to, I think I'm in here in this demo account, so I'm going to come in here and I'm going to invite myself. Okay, I'm not in any vaults. So I'm going to come down here and add myself to this vault. Well, this is all I have. This is- So I'm gonna come down here and add myself to this vault, um, well, this is all I, this is all that I would have to do is add myself to the vault right here. I would get an email. And then that's gonna have those two buttons in there that I showed you earlier about downloading the, either the Google or the Apple app. And then I can install the app and get in. Um, I don't need to set up a password or anything like that, so. Um, it's, it's very easy for people to get in. Um, they don't have to create an account necessarily, you just have to invite them to the vault. Or, you know, they can sign up on a landing page too, or some other way of getting in, but. Once they have access to the vault, then they are able to download the app and get in, so. Very simple, just confirm their email address and then they're in. Uh, okay, a couple more Q and As here, if you don't have the app on your phone, will your contacts still get app notifications for the vault? Or can you turn that on, offer on? Sarah, if you're talking, I'm not sure if you're talking about like your, your own phone, yeah, I mean, you yourself don't. Need to have the app installed in your phone for your contacts, uh, to get push notification or the app notifications. They could install the app, you don't have to install the app, but you can still navigate through the back office here and send out an app notification if you wanted to. Um, without, you know, having to have it installed personally. So if that's not the question you were going for, let me know. Uh, Alison asks, so if the save reply could be text or app notification, could they get it in both places if opted into both? Um, you'd have to send them separately, but yeah, you could send a text and an app notification if you wanted to, uh, by sending them separately here. And so Tricia has a question. I'm not quite clear on how the URL works in the push notifications, let me pull that up here, uh, just, just one message, app notification, okay. We, would we include, say, a URL to our newsletter, which seems to happen automatically when using a text? And how do we find the URL for a saved reply? Now, the saved replies, they actually don't have a URL. Uh, they're just sort of like a pre-fill template thing, they fill out your box, uh, or fill out the screen, you know, so if I pick one of these here. Uh, again, it's just this one happens to fill out the title. Um, you know, if you fill out those other fields, it would also pre-fill these. So the saved replies don't have their own URL. As far as the newsletter, that sounds like you might be sending out a campaign, uh, that's something where. You'd have to have that, you know, depending on what, where you're sending it out, if that's. You, if you have that content on your website, um, or in an email, you'd have to have a link to it somewhere for, for. Uh, to send out via app notifications. So, uh, it's a little bit different because the app notifications don't work with campaigns at the moment, they're kind of a one-time push that you can send out. So hopefully that helps out. Um, lots of good questions here, uh, keep them coming, so. Alison asks, if they don't have to set up a password, then anyone can see it. No, that's not the case. So when they download the app. All they have to do is put in their email address that, you know, they got that notification for. And then they have, they'll get an email and they have to click a link in that email and then the app lets them into the account, so. They do have to essentially own that email or have access to that email. Address that you send them to. So it's not like anyone can just download the app and say, hey, I want to go in your member area. They need to be both invited, they have to be listed as a, in the vault area. You know, so let me pull myself up again here. They have to have at least one vault listed down here. And then they have to confirm their email address essentially with whatever email is up here. Uh, on their account. So not everyone can get it, it's not a, a public thing. It's still just as private, it's just a little bit different because, you know, we heard from some people that. Passwords are very challenging, especially when you're trying to get people moving, uh, get people moved off of Facebook. This makes it really super smooth. And we've had really good luck with, uh, with it so far with people installing it. Uh, let's see, okay, so Jennifer asks, I'm in the member area client portal on the app. When I click it, I see the pipeline igniter inclined funnel challenge. Okay, so you must have qualified for a recent promo, it's awesome. Is there some, is there somewhere else that I need to go to do what you're showing or show by things my back office, okay? It sounds like, so the pipeline igniter inclined funnel challenge are courses in our member area. Uh, so when you tap on those, you're going into a member area as if you were, uh, you know, you could pretend, for example, you're visiting your own member area. You'd have to go into your own, uh, back office and then you would see, for example, this menu, uh, with all the features that, you know, come with, with your account. So, uh, that's where you'd be able to then send your app notification and so on. Let's see here, uh, Sarah says, do app notifications go automatically or do you need to set them up? The member area ones, as well as like those new lead notifications, uh, and, and the sales and some incoming text notifications, those are all automatic. The only ones that aren't automatic are the ones that you would manually do through your dashboard here. Um, so hopefully that helps there. Uh, let's see, anticipate in the future that we'd ever be able to see the specific names of people who are getting an email. Versus sending the number, oh, that's a really good, uh, point, um, yes, there is. Oh, are you done? Oh, I see before you're sending, okay. Yeah, it, it should be, yeah, I, that's a, a good wishlist item, maybe some button there. I, I think what Heather's asking is. When you're composing, for example, an email. Um, and I say write an email and it shows seventy eight contacts, like finding, having a way to click that and then confirm that. You know, so they can re, uh, review the names before sending, that's a good wishlist item. We don't have the right now. You can see the people that it was sent to by clicking on contact messages. Uh, I'm not sure if this account has any. Okay, I guess this is a push or an app notification, so I can click on that, but. Uh, you can see that here, like this didn't have any clicks on it, but this number is clickable. Uh, so you can click on that and it'll show you who actually did it. This is an email. But like if I come on here and click, you need clicks, it'll show you exactly in the contact manager who has seen it, so it's. I guess a slightly different variation of what you're asking, so. Uh, let's see here, a couple more questions. What's the advantage of using app notifications instead of email? Uh, it's really kind of another way to get in front of people, um, you know, as the email inboxes get more and more crowded. It could be more difficult to stand out. If you can get someone to install the app and the app notifications are right in front of them basically all day long, it shows up with everything else that they probably have in their notification. Uh, you know. Uh, personally on a phone, it's like, like, you know, I'll have like a, a notification for a new Facebook message and maybe somebody sent me a text and. Then I see some little email preview and a few other things. So this will show up right in that. List of notifications on your phone, so it's a little bit more in front of them. Uh, as well as it's, it's something that they most likely want to see because they've installed the app and they've accepted the notifications. Um, so it's a, it definitely, I mean, it has the potential of getting a little bit more exposure. Of course, in email, you can go on longer, if there's more room for a very long email, but, you know, push notifications is very short. So. It's, they could go hand in hand, for example, you could send out an email and then send out this app notification saying. Hey, check out this email if you haven't seen it, whatever, uh, there's. You could also even, for example, take that email and put it on your website instead, you could send that out. Uh, and send a link to a page as the app notification, so a bunch of different things you could do with that, uh, if it helps. Um, Paul asks, can a person verify their account through text instead of email? Oh, but that's a really good idea, um. I think it could be something we could add to our wishlist. Uh, that's kind of an alternative to email. That might be easier for some people and some, some accounts might not have an email address. Uh, let's see here. She lists, I have the app and I only receive email notifications for the member area posts and comments, okay. Uh, if that's not happening for you, what I would suggest doing, uh, is. To say, or going back into the app and logging into your own member area. Because it won't, uh, register your device for push notification or for the app notifications. Until you have, uh, visited your own member area through the app and. If you have done that and it's still not happening, uh, click, I guess, I don't have, I wonder if I can. Like, yeah, I can probably get into my own member area here and see what this. Show you what this looks like. It'll look similar on your phone, but there will be a my account link up here. And actually, well, let's take, I'm logged as the admin, so it's gonna go to a different screen, but. When you click on that, there should be a managed devices, uh, link down here. If there's not, that means for some reason your phone isn't registered, so you might want to. Contact support if that's the case, but I would start by going to, uh, opening up the app and visiting your own member area first and then seeing if. You get those notifications. Cool, let's see here, um, yeah, so. Okay, so Alison has another question about save replies, I'll cover here quick, uh, and we'll have to hop over to, I think, our website reviews here. Just so we can make sure we get them all in there, but, uh, in the save reply, it had one box for. Text or app notification. And what if you only wanted to send to one and not the other? There's only one box for, how does that work? Or am I missing something? So. Yeah, so all this is, so save reply just sort of pre-fills the screen, um, so let me, I'll, I'll make one called, you know, one, two, three test here. And so subject. Body, I'll just fill them out with a name, so message. And then, well, I suppose. I'll have to invent a fake, I'll just put like Google in here. Right there, I'll create my save reply. And now, like when I'm composing. When I'm composing a message here. When I'm sending a notification. And I choose my one, two, three tests. You can see it filled out subject message URL, it would have included a picture if I would have included that as well. But now, if I go over instead of the app notification, I can actually use that save reply also. For text, so like if I come over here and say, write text. I can come here and click this and it's gonna pre-fill the message as well as the picture, so kind of, you can use it for different. Uh, different purposes. And if you want one that's specific, you could always just create a save reply, you know, called like app notification. Uh, to be more specific about it, but the save reply does kind of work across multiple mediums. Uh, likewise, if I were coming here and say, I want to send an email. And then I choose that same save reply. It'll fill out the subject and the body, uh, and then that, that's all I use is from that save reply, so hopefully that's helpful. Um, it just sort of bridges it and works across, um, there, so. Cool, okay, um, like it's one tiny last question, you want to go to the vault and click open, does it ask? It does ask for email and password, so here I do need a password, um. It shouldn't through the app, if it does, then there should be like a switch account, like pull up in the side menu and hit switch account. And then go through there, uh, maybe your app got, or the phone got logged out or something like that, so, um, I would suggest that if you. Are still having problems, there certainly reach out to us, but. But yeah, I think, um, with that, we'll pass it over to the website reviews here, uh, hopefully we'll see enough time, thanks.
Awesome. I wanted to address a, a question here, Gold Girl in Training, love your handle there. Um, you asked a couple of questions here and this is, this is really just to kind of, uh, tie this all up. For those of you who are new to the app and are kind of wondering how you'll use this to benefit your business. Uh, it is important to understand that for you personally using the app, uh, this is a great place for you to just for yourself. Have everything in one place and to be able to manage it from one spot wherever you are. So if you want to go into your dashboard, if you have a get oiling account, if you have a get oiling and an attract well account. If you have multiple accounts on either, you can have everything in one place and you don't have to manage a bunch of different logins and. If you have access to some of our courses, to my coaching, to courses that, uh, that our team creates, to courses that our community. And services that our community provides, you can have all of that inside of one app without having to go to twenty seven different places. So for you personally, that is a great place to start using the app just for your own organization and management. Now, for your people to use the app, if you want your people to use the app and you want to take advantage of these app notifications, this all begins with a vault. Right? So if you, like, they need to be able to sign into your member area, like, that is the main thing, so. Your, uh, your website is not an app for them, your member area is. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't let them see things on your website. From inside the app, but it all begins with the member area. So when you're logged into the app, you'll see that you can manage your dashboard. But then underneath that, you see the vaults you have access to. The vaults you have access to, that's what your people are gonna see. They're gonna see a vault view, basically. So whatever they have access to from you or from anyone else who has, uh, a good oiling or attract well. Account with a member area, that's gonna be, uh, where that shows up. So, um, and good, yeah, if you don't see your dashboard and you're logged in, add another email address to the app. Like, if you have four different email addresses, you may have a whole bunch of stuff that you can tie all together. If you've signed up, you know, for different things with four different. Things, if that makes sense. All right, so yeah, someone does need to have, uh, the vault access to a vault if they are not, uh, like you, a good oiling or attract well user. So, um, super exciting, I'm glad you guys are so engaged with this. We have two live reviews. I'd like to invite Donna. Out, if you could raise your hand for me, Donna, I'm gonna have you come up first and then, uh, we'll bring, uh, Jesse out. All right, let's chat. Hi, Donna. Think I have you here, I brought you out to chat, can you? Go into my gallery here, no, it doesn't look like it allowed you. Okay, here we go, there you are, hi.
Hello.
So nice to have you here. So, uh, tell me more about, uh, what kind of help you're looking for today.
So I have, uh, done a lot of training, so I have a lot of different pages, but I'm not sure quite how to link them together. Most recently, I did the homepage with the beautiful pages from Paula Berens. And, um, I'd like to link maybe my get growing game plan to it or something, I'm just not sure. How to link them all together.
Okay, so, uh, let's see, so you've, you've got a bunch of things that you're working with. I love, love, love. That you, um. You shared, I think you, you mentioned. What did you say? I'm, I'm pulling up this thing here that, that you shared. Uh, you are trying to reach your ideal customer gracefully aging faith-filled women who are ready to make changes to their health and wellness. And would like support with Young Living Products and Community. I want to commend you for that clarity. And, um, and that's, that, that's very beautiful and I hope that you use those words throughout your website. Cause that is, that is absolutely, um, like, when, when I read that, I was like, I know who that is, right?
Oh.
Uh, right, so, um, your people are going to resonate deeply with what you share, so let's, let's go take a look and, and kind of talk through this. Uh, so you have, it looks like a, um, a landing page for your homepage right now. Do you have a page that you've been working on?
Yes, the, um. Homepage from, uh, the beautiful pages, so.
Got you, okay.
Well, I think I did a copy of it, cause I wasn't sure if I'm supposed to just work on it from what. What Paula sent, so. It's called, um, yeah, it's called the copy of the homepage or something.
Hey, is it this one?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, or, or this one, you've got a copy.
It was the DS copy, cause I didn't know if I was supposed to work on the other one, so.
All right, wonderful. So it looks like this is, uh, and by the way. Paula, if you're here. We need to bring you out again so we can talk about this with everyone.
Yes, yeah, I've really enjoyed having the templates, I'm just not. You know, I've tried to add my own things a little bit, but I'm not sure quite. What all to add and.
Yeah, so the beautiful thing about starting with a well-made template like Paula's given you here. And, I mean, this is, this is really, really good, um, Paula's made some wonderful things, really. All you need to do is swap out the colors, um, you know, where they, you know, fit in with your own personal brand. Um, you know, swap out, make sure you have in your, uh, customize my site where you have your, your fonts set up. And, and your, it's your colors and fonts right here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't quite know how to do that.
We do have, we, we do have several trainings on this on our YouTube channel and you could als- always go and click right here, uh, for, uh, custom colors and fonts. There we go, right here, so there's an article on how to get those set up, they're quite simple. Um, and then, um, and then, yeah, you just, you know, swap out. I know she has provided, uh, Canva templates for this, so you would just go in and, you know, change out an image that, that you prefer or that resonates with you more deeply. Um, and then, most importantly, you just want to make sure that the words that you're using. Uh, are really speaking directly to your person. And I think that that's, that's the best place to start, you know, if. If you really love a lot of what's here, the purpose of this, you know, being a, a template in the first place is for you to have a starting point. Right, so.
Yeah, that's what I really like.
Yeah, you don't.
Starting point, yeah.
You don't have to reinvent it, you know, um, you could swap out a couple of things, of course, and you know, make it your own. Uh, but, but really just look at it and, and tweak it so it sounds like it's coming from you and most importantly. It's speaking to your ideal person. Now, lucky for you, I'm pretty sure you and Paula have a pretty similar ideal person.
Yeah, that's why it resonated with me so much.
So, um, so you were talking about wanting to integrate, uh, game, like a get growing game plan, tell me, tell me more about that.
So I ha- I did that training, um, sometime with you, so I do have a get growing game plan. With some questions.
Okay.
Cause I've done a, a sleep challenge, so I added sleep things with it. So, but I'm not sure how to link that up, so.
Okay, so you have, this is ready to go then, you have all of your questions here, it looks like, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent, okay, uh, so basically you just want to be able to offer this, um, right, as, as a way for people to connect with you?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so what I would do is, um, I would feature it prominently on your, on your page here. Uh, that you're creating, so maybe, um, swapping out or including among these options here.
Okay.
Book a call with me, get in touch, right?
Oh.
You could, you could put that right here. You could say, you know, are you stuck on your journey? I'm here to help you. Uh, click here and then you link this to that page.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, just be thinking about when, when she arrives here at your page, she's probably seen something that you've posted. On social somewhere. She's liked what you've had to say so far. And so she's curious. And so when she lands here, she wants to know what's in it for me. And so if you, if what you have right here tells her that this is for her. Uh, and then you are inviting her. I think a really great thing, uh, to include as she continues to scroll for your ideal person. Would be some kind of a community, right? Like you're come, come join this wonderful group of, of people. Um, and yeah, so if you have a lead group, this would be an exceptional place to put it. Um, but you could, of course, if you don't have that yet, by all means, put that, you know, hey, I'd love to connect with you personally. Uh, you know, I don't, you're not a number to me. I like to make friends with the people I connect with online. You know, you could put that right here. Absolutely. Um, and then, yeah, and then just, you know, plug in the things that you have, you know, if you've got, I, I know Paula, this, um. This thing that you got from Paula came with several lead magnets. So you really don't even have to go elsewhere for those. Uh, so those can be, you know, if you've got the centering prayer here, that's already included, which is wonderful and already done for you. So. Um, no, I, I think this is a great start. I would just follow her training, uh, as well as our, um, you know, kind of custom homepage trainings and stuff. So that you can see how you maybe change the background color here. Uh, you, you know, make the fonts, the ones you prefer. Okay. And then of course going into Canva and just sort of making this your own.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And one more thing, do you see right up here, uh, in our tab where it says P B H custom homepage template?
Yes.
I want to show you that real quick. Um, that is something that you're going to want to change. Uh, just because, you know, this is what everybody sees, you know, we want this to actually say you, right? So, so what we're going to do is if we go right here. And we go to settings. It's this, it's this title bar text. So if we, even if we just call this home. That will actually make that change, right? So here, let me refresh this here real quick. And now it says home.
Oh, great. Okay.
All right. Just for future reference. Thank you so much for coming out. Do you have any other questions?
Um. When I use Canva and I put my picture in that says, um. Something about, um, for gracefully aging. Um, I wasn't sure how to switch it with the one that's there because it came in a different size. And so, um, so for the first picture. That's there. They, uh. Yeah, that one. I wanted to switch it with the one that I have from. Canva that I, I put in to get oiling. But I wasn't sure how to make it the same size. It didn't.
Uh, ew. Um, do you know, was, was this, um, is this provided as a template from Paula?
Yes.
Okay. So what I would do in this case, uh, is instead of using the Canva button and get oiling, because you might not necessarily know the dimensions of that original photo.
Right.
Uh, that, you know, do it in your Canva, export it exactly as it is. Don't, you know, resize it or anything like that. Uh, and, and it should work just the same. If you just simply.
I thought I did. I thought I did, but when I. Went to put it in, it didn't seem to fit anymore. It didn't seem to be the same. So.
That is sometimes it takes just a little bit of tweaking. It'll look a little different depending on the device that you're on. Resolution size can be kind of a tricky thing, but I would just recommend making sure that you, um, just make sure you keep, um, the dimensions, uh, and the original. Here. And it also, uh, it would be important as well, uh, and I see this from time to time, uh, when we're, we're designing websites. Um, the image that you use in the background needs to be a very high resolution image. Uh, so most of the ones that you will find in Canva are going to fit the bill in that way. Um, although for what it's worth, um, if this is a Canva template. Um, it's really beautiful. You may just change the color swatch here and switch up the words to your own. Oh, perfect. There you go.
And I had, and I added the words, but it doesn't seem to. Come the same way and the same size. So.
Got you. Got you. So that just might take a little bit of tweaking and trying.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe re-download her template, uh, and, and start, start a new one and see if that makes a difference.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for coming out and please come back again and show us your progress.
Oh, thank you so much.
Totally. All right, Jesse. Thank you for your patience. Please raise your hand for me. Just a dog out of there. You are. Hello. Come on out and chat. Hi.
Hi. Good morning. Well, it's morning here. I don't know where you are.
Are you West Coast?
I am in Utah.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. Yeah, we're, uh, we're all over the place. I mean, I'm East Coast, but I as well be morning. Hey. Awesome. So let's talk about, talk about your site and what you've got going on.
So, um, I'm in the middle of changing my, well, not really changing, just. Expanding, I want to say. My, uh. What do you call it? My. Oh my gosh, I'm lost for words, you know, like to reach out people. Um, I. I've always journaled, but I've never really took it seriously until lately. I'm into Bible journaling and things like that. So I've been creating journals and I created a page for the journals. But I, I, I was thinking, I, I. So this, this is my. Main page was my homepage. And then if you go to side menu, you will see that I created one for journals as well. And I linked it to the Amazon because there are Amazon now. And, um. Those are, you know, I did, I'm bilingual, so I'm, I'm able to do them both in English and Spanish, which, you know, I, I can do that. And then, um. I want to see if I can offer them. Digitally, but I couldn't figure out how. I did send an email and I just, I just couldn't figure it out. Uh, and, um, you know, with the instructions that I was provided, I can, I haven't done it. So, um. Because I thought maybe if. People don't want to. Like, you know, purchase the book, maybe they just want to write away and they can download the pages. But I don't know if I should put the whole, because each page, each journal has a hundred pages. So should I download the hundred pages? They're kind of like the same. Well, they have different Bible verses, but they're kind of the same. Or do I just do the whole, you know, am I making sense? I'm sorry. I'm talking.
You have, you have a PDF. Do you have a PDF version of your?
I do have a PDF version of each one. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
This prayer journal has a Bible verse on each page, a different Bible verse on each page. So, um, it's, it's really not the same. The other ones that are below that, they're all the same. Uh, they don't have any Bible verses. So, um, I did a planner, which, you know, um, I did that too. And then those two. Um. Are just regular, you know, journals.
Okay. No, that's fantastic. So you would like to sell a digital version of these, right?
Yeah. Is that even possible with?
Absolutely. Yeah. It's 100%. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Um, so, um, that's, that's really exciting. Um, basically all you're going to do, um, let's just pretend we're going to create a new page, um, and pretend like this is, this is the one. So. Um, maybe this one right here, because I, I think this Jenna template homepage is, is a really great sales page. Uh, or registration page for something, right? So we can talk about the benefits. Here's what, this, here's what it'll do for you. So you would have one of these for each of the, uh, the, the journals that you sell, right? So you'd have the image of it. You talk about how to use it, what it'll do for you. Maybe, maybe you, um, you could have a link for them to go off to Amazon and purchase it. But you could off, offer the digital on this page. So when you're in settings, you go to payments. You require payment. You've got Stripe set up already. Good job.
Right.
Then you add your payment option. So this would be, we'll call this, um, the, um, di- digital download. Um, and we'll call it personal, yeah, digital download. Or we could say, um, personal journal, digital. Or digital, personal, or whatever you want to call it, right? So we're going to give it a name. Uh, you want to, you know, charge, uh, nine ninety-nine for it. Um, put your currency, you want to use a coupon code, that's where you put it. Um, if you want to tag them, then you give them journal one or whatever the tag is, you know, you want to say this, you want to go and look and see who bought what. Um, you give it the same name as the thing that you're, right? Cause you, if you want to know it's English, it's Espanol. Which one do you want? Um, have that there. If you have a specific campaign, so let's just say somebody purchases. A, um, a campaign, uh, of the English, they, they, they purchased a digital version of your English, um, journal. Maybe you have a campaign where you want to then offer them coaching, a one-on-one call, an exclusive community, uh, you know, a program, something like that, right? Um, you could have that kickoff a campaign for them if you want it. And you'll know because if you have, uh, the English option and the Spanish option, because you could do two. So two payment options, one of them would be, uh, English. And the other one would be Spanish, right? Um, then you could have an English, a campaign, a Spanish campaign, right?
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense? And then here's what. Perfect. So then what, what we would do is after you set up your payment the way you want to and whatever messages you want to send to them after they've purchased. Uh, but then make sure we go over to leads. You want to send them to. A confirmation page, thank you page, right? So this is, you know, hey, you like, congratulations. I'm so excited for you on your journey. Um. Go check your email right now because you're going to send them the link to the PDF in, in their email.
Okay.
Yep. Now, do you know how to add a PDF to your, um.
No, that's what I got stuck.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that real quick. All right. So any, on any editor, uh, on our site, and I'm actually going to do this right here on this page. On any editor on our site, all you have to do is go to more rich right here.
Okay.
And then you go to upload file.
Oh, yeah. Um, I did that, but it wouldn't take it. And I think it's because. A little bit more than a hundred pages, like it, the journal has a hundred pages, but plus the cover, plus, you know.
Got you.
That's what I was thinking. Do I need to? Put it less, but then they won't get the whole.
Right. So you can compress, um, or like you can compress the size of a PDF. So you probably have it at print, uh, like printable right now. So that it would be like a full quality print. Uh, but if it's a digital download, it doesn't have to have the same resolution and quality as print. So you could actually compress, um. I cannot remember the name. There's, there are tons of free sites that are out there that'll actually.
Just put a website there. Yeah.
Perfect. There we go. Uh, yeah. So compress the PDF and then you could upload it here and that should be, uh, that should be totally fine. Another option, uh, could be if you wanted to, um, is if you wanted to maybe put your journals inside of a vault. If you wanted to have them go alongside a program or something like that, you could also put them inside there as well, if you wanted to do. But, um, but this is the simplest way is to just, you know, make a page, talk about what it is. Offer the English and the Spanish option, have the prices, customize the campaigns. If you want to send them to a thank you page or confirmation page. And then the email campaign that goes to them after they purchase has the link to that PDF that you've uploaded.
Right. Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay. So, um, in the page that I created for the journals to be linked to Amazon, then I have to create a new one for. Uh, it will be a good idea. And I cannot link anything here. Like I can say. Download of digital version. I, I have to then create a new page. Is that correct?
I mean, you could, you could, but it would be a lot of different options, right? So, um, you, you have like, what is this? One, two, three, four? Uh, like you've, you've got all of these different ones and you've got English version, Spanish version, right? Um, you could have all eight of those options on a pop-up on this page. So they could click like, you know, for digital, you could say buy this digitally, click here. It'll pop up all of them, the same pop-up on this, on the screen, and they'd have to pick which one of them they want. You could do that on this page if you wanted to. That is an option.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I find it to be a little bit more effective, uh, to like really give something its due. If you really want to sell it. Um, you know, give it its own space, right? So when you give people multiple options, they don't pick any a lot of the time. So if they're in, if they're really into the idea of a prayer journal, let's take them to a prayer journal page. Right? And now they can purchase the prayer journal there. And maybe, you know, where you go from here is you, you're actually showing prayer journal. Uh, personal planner, uh, personal journal, uh, and you, um, you just have pictures of those with, with a little bit of information. They click them, they go off to the page that's just got the personal journal. And it's there in English and Spanish, Amazon links and digital options. Right?
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way you can really sell the, the thing that you're selling.
Right. Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
I'm so glad that we were able to get over that today to cover that. Uh, was there anything else? Do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, I, no, you covered everything. Thank you. I would just, I. I'm usually okay with these things. And then when I email, they answer right away, but sometimes. I can be challenged.
And so we. Totally understood. Yeah. Well, that's, that's why we're here. That's why we do this every week. So feel free. If you ever want to come back and, and have that walkthrough, we're happy to help you. I absolutely love this. Uh, by the way, it's really cute. Love the branding here. Awesome. So we look forward to seeing more of your progress. Thanks for coming out, Jesse.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, gold girl in training. If you would pretty please, I would love to see your website, uh, and give you some space here, just like we did for our two folks who signed up today. If you go to get oiling.com forward slash website review, uh, you can sign up for your own dedicated space on an upcoming live session. And we're so, so happy to help you, uh, go through that and give you, um, insights on an upcoming call. So how many of you are really excited about using this app and pushing out notifications to your people? I have been so excited to see what you guys have been doing, uh, and, um, gosh, this is so cool. All right. So, um, congratulations on all of your amazing work. Please sign up for a website review. Tell your friends. This is not just a place to learn about how to get your tech done. Uh, we have lots of amazing training. We feature great trainers and leaders. In Young Living. This is all about helping you grow your business on your terms. Uh, whether you are just trying to focus and get organized and share young living with a ton of people this year. Or. Young living is a beautiful thing that you do alongside creating journals and coaching, uh, and, and being a chiropractor or whatever it is that sings your heart song. Uh, we are here to serve you and we will be back next week at the same time. Thank you, Greg, for all the hard work you do making this thing work. And thank you team for keeping this train moving. Y'all, we'll see you next week. And, um, yeah, by the way, you guys, we are back again. If you don't know, uh, attractwell.com, that is our other site. It's our other system. Uh, if you do have a young living adjacent business, uh, and you want more insights and help in, in kind of a little bit more deeper tech strategy sometimes. Uh, that is a place that you're always welcome to come and check out our training that is attractwell.com forward slash office hours and is at two PM Eastern. Uh, so just under an hour from now, uh, on Thursday. So we look forward to seeing you guys there and as well as next week and have a great week, you guys. Happy New Year.